Today, we made our annual excursion out to beautiful Prudence Island. Discuss some things. I would like to thank the harbor master from Bristol. I'm gonna forget his last name. I know his first name is Greg. But thank him for coming out and updating the residents and us on the new parking plans for Bristol as they endeavor to build a new marina. We have a few takeaways that Mr. Rayner is gonna work on with the people on Prudence, but other than that, everything seems to be pretty good over there. We have our consent agenda. We have bills to pay. Anybody have questions on the bills? Mr. Gleason?
I have an indirect question here. For the transfer station, we get billed by Bob's Tire to pick up used tires. Do we profit on those? In other words, we charge $5 and it costs us $1.50. Does that go into the transfer station fund or to RIREC? And if you don't know, you can tell me that and just let me know.
I can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
Got all?
That's it.
Motion to receive and place on file.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to one. Next, we'll be sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Tonight, we'll be hearing a transfer of a Class BV alcohol beverage license. The application to transfer the Class BV alcohol beverage license from TNBC Beach Club LLC doing business as the Newport Beach Club, 195 Harbor Drive, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, to the TNBC New Beach Club LLC. This is due to a change in stakeholders, stockholders of the Northern Waterfront LLP Associates to Velocity NBC LLC. That's a lot of acronyms and whatnot. Basically, somebody bought the Newport Beach Club and they want to transfer the license. Cut that in a nutshell. So do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Transfer of BV liquor license?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. James Hall, on behalf of the Newport Beach Club.
If you can state your name and address for the record, if anybody wants to speak for or against it, please do so as well when you come up to the podium.
Sure. Again, James Hall, on behalf of the Newport Beach Club. My address, my office address is 1 Citizens Plaza, Providence, Rhode Island.
Perfect. Thank you. So, you want to move the license over and?
Yeah, I think it's...
Actually, I have one quick question. So the application, subpart A, is that gonna be the renewal for the entire year next year or is this just until December 1st? Right, December 1st, okay.
We'd have to do a new renewal at that point.
Right, on top of that. So we're doing a 60-day license?
Correct, at this point.
Okay.
And I think, as the President put it succinctly, the stock of the Newport Beach Club was purchased by another entity which would trigger the need for a transfer, a new application, although it's still gonna be the Newport Beach Club LLC.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Hall? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments?
I'd like to make one.
Chief? Please.
I'd like to ask that this matter be put over to the next council meeting while the Port Smith Police Department conducts an investigation.
Into?
Into an incident.
At this particular location?
That occurred at this location.
Okay. Mr. Solicitor, we would keep the public hearing open and?
Yes.
Move it to the next meeting if we were to do that?
If you were to do that, yes.
Okay. Do you think your staff has enough time to do a thorough investigation in two and a half weeks, three weeks? Three weeks.
I'd hope to have it wrapped up by then.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to continue the public hearing till?
October 9th.
October 9th, is that enough time for you?
Yes, because that's Tuesday. I'm actually gonna be out of town on that date, so... Okay.
Okay. The following meeting is which?
The 22nd.
Motion to continue the public hearing until October 22nd, is that good for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gavin?
Yes.
Until we hear this motion, they live under the terms of the old license?
Yes.
And it's also Brian, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are you planning on staying open past? Usually, you guys close down somewhat early. It is a beach club and it's cold outside today.
It already is. Basically, the whole complex closing down predominantly on Monday, Columbus Day, maybe two more small events following these items. And then, basically, those will air services on the 22nd, I believe.
Of October?
Yes.
Okay, so...
The statute requires that there's a change of more than 50 percent ownership. You have to disclose that to the Board of Licensed Commissioners so they could continue to operate. The license is still in effect during the continuance period.
Okay. Okay. All right, so...
So I'll give it a second.
To the, moving it to the 22nd. Is everybody else on the council gonna be here? I will not be here on the 22nd. So the six of you will be here. Mr. Aguirre, can you take care of the meeting?
I'll be here.
Unfortunately, I'll be out of town for business. All right? So there is a motion and a second. Any further comments on that? Mr. Hall, do you need to check your schedule? I guess we should ask that.
That's okay, they're asking me here. I can have one of my partners be here on that day. We'll make sure somebody's here.
If that becomes an issue, please notify the clerk and we can move it to another date.
Absolutely.
Okay. Same thing for you, Brian, obviously. All those in favor of postponing or?
Continuing.
Continuing this hearing to October 22nd?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
So do we not do the rest of these?
I think we just say, yeah, everything would be, the same rules would be in effect, Kevin, if the victual's license would carry over.
This is the, that's an annual renewal, though. Is that December 1?
Is there a new, it's the new one?
So there still is one in effect?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one in effect for the end of year.
Right, so we'll do that one. We'll just do the whole kick and bootle on the 22nd.
Then I'll make a motion to adjourn as the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. We have minutes to approve from the 9/10/18 meeting?
Mr. President, I will be abstaining. I was not present.
Same here.
We'll approve the minutes of September 10, 2018.
Second.
Any questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye?
I have a question. So although I wasn't here, I was reading the minutes and there was a motion to move the discussion of new business five to September 24th and it's not on the agenda.
Is that the Equinix Island Land Trust?
Yes.
Okay. He couldn't make it this evening, so he asked us to push it off to the 9th.
Okay.
So it will be on the 9th agenda.
Thank you.
So we pass that five to zero with two abstentions for not being here for that meeting. I'm not on there. I'm not even, did I, where am I? I'm not on the minute.
You came in...
I came, all right. I was gonna say, I thought I was here. I'm like, wait a minute, where am I?
You came in at 7:03.
Oh.
So it's on.
All right. I was like, wait a minute. We're good. Next up, we have tax vouchers for 2018-0924-01, 2018-0924-05.
Motion to approve tax vouchers 2018-0924?
Second.
As received in the council package, five items.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Rayner, Town Administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, after 24 years of service, Denise Davis retired from her position as the Portsmouth Building Clerk on September 14th. She left big shoes to fill and we are working hard to hire a new building clerk as soon as possible. I'm sure I echo the sentiment of many contractors and homeowners who have worked with Denise over the years by wishing her a very happy and well-earned retirement. Last Thursday, there was a gathering of friends and family in Glen Park to honor Grace Kinnunen. We commemorated her many years of public service to the Glen Park Committee and the Glen Park Committee and the Glen Park Committee and DPW placed a bench in Glen Park in her honor. Grace started volunteering for Portsmouth in the 1970s by partaking in the Glen Park Working Committee where she oversaw the buildings, grounds, and events held at the venue. Through the years, Grace has never stopped advocating for Glen Park and its improvements and it was an honor to be there. Last Thursday night, we held the first meeting of the Shoreline Access Rights of Way Ad Hoc Working Group. Almost 20 people have signed on to take part. We discussed CRMC right-of-way procedures, the status of the town's right-of-way database, and the points of concern raised at the July 23rd Town Council meeting. The group will meet again next month to discuss specific proposals and recommendations regarding those concerns that can be applied either specifically depending on the neighborhood or in general for the whole town. The goal is to present suggestions and recommendations for the council review prior to the next budget and summer season. The firm we hired to conduct the facilities assessment for town buildings has completed their fieldwork and those engineers have turned their findings over to analysts who expect to have a report ready for the town next month. With regard to police station construction, construction is now 65 percent complete. Since the last report, roof work has been completed, underground utilities are being installed, siding prep work has been completing and siding is now being installed, rough plumbing work is completed, spray insulation is completed, and entry brick work is being installed. There have been no new requests for payments since last report. The project remains within budget, but there are outstanding potential change orders which are being negotiated. Substantial completion looks to be accomplished in December, vice-January, due to a push by the contractor to get the work done earlier and a resequencing of work. And then, lastly, it was my duty, sad as though, as it was, to discuss the passing of John King, our Emergency Management Director. Since then, Ray Perry, Captain, United States Coast Guard, retired, who has been a volunteer with the organization, has stepped up to take over as the director. Ray Perry teaches emergency management at the Massachusetts Maritime Academy and is a resident of Portsmouth and knows our operations very well. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Sir, anybody have any questions for Mr. Rayner?
Mr. Gleason, just a comment. I just want to say that DPW did a nice job putting the bench down there for Grace Kinnunen and would like to further add, I didn't know at the time that she was one of the people that started the Melville Committee with Ed Rizzi. So that goes back a few years as well. So we missed that one as well. Thank you.
Mr. Casson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rayner, you said we're 65 percent complete?
That's from the contractor at our last meeting, yes.
And do you happen to know the amount of money that we're at? Because I have us less than 50 percent complete based on billing. I'm just under $5 million.
I can see where the confusion would come from. I mean, some of the project costs more than others, so there may be something that costs a lot of money like the cell blocks, but that's not a big percentage of the work. So it's hard to equate apples and oranges, or apples to apples in that situation. But construction-wise, we're about 65 percent complete.
Based on the half a million dollars per month, which we've typically been seeing, there's still nine more payments left in there. I find it hard that we're gonna get to there by December, but maybe we will. The second concern I have is we, this month, and I didn't check it because I was out of town this weekend again doing family items, and I thought we're gonna have a monthly report every month, second meeting of the month on...
That's correct.
...update, and yet it's not on this month's agenda.
That's correct. The owner's rep was unavailable tonight. He'll be here at the next meeting.
Okay. You mentioned that there were no more change orders.
No, sir. There are change orders that are outstanding. They're being negotiated right now. They're PCOs.
Correct. I guess my question is, is not paving the parking lot taking down the existing building part of those PCOs?
No, not both. Right now, we're discussing putting a binder coat on the parking lot because it would be paved at such a late date in the season. We would let that binder coat remain until the spring paving schedule or the summer paving schedule of next year. The cost of that is being discussed now. There is no discussion at all about not taking down the old building.
So I guess I'm asking a report on, to know what extra money or money we're relieving the contractor of in the current contract to complete this contract. I'm trying to think, one was the parking lot of $40,000. There was another 85, I thought, of PCO 16, which hadn't turned into, started out at 137, we paid 50, somewhere there's another 85. I would really like to know if, in fact, we're relieving him of his commitment on the $10 million and then respending that money, which means we'll be retaxing the people in Portsmouth because it's not gonna be part of the $10 million, correct? That's the proposal, as it was last month?
Yeah. I would let the owner's rep at the next meeting discuss it in greater detail, but the reality is we have so much money to build the building. We are obligated under contract to pay those bills.
He's obligated under contract to do what's on the piece of paper because that's the one he signed.
And in any construction project, there are areas in the contract which have to be deliberated as you go because there are unanticipated environmental changes or discoveries. We had the strike, or not the strike, but we had the roofing delay. So there probably are going to be either claims or change orders that result from those kinds of issues that we're going to have to discuss with the architect, the owner's rep, and the building contractor as we go. But we're obligated to pay the bills. We have to continue to pay the bills. If there are claims against the contractor or against the architect, then we have to settle those separately from the administration of the contract.
Okay. But the gentleman that stood in front of us said that there was, the architect did not deny any claims for the roof, so I hope we don't see that as a cost.
Well, I'm not sure that that's what he said. We denied any responsibility for the roof. We sent the letter.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Anybody else have questions? Ms. Pedro?
It's my understanding that Ms. Davis is still employed here?
Ms. Davis has retired as a full-time benefits-receiving employee and now she is a part-time, non-benefit employee working as a four-hour-a-day clerk over at DPW.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We have resignations and appointments. We have the resignation of Mr. Hall from the zoning board. We have a motion to receive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes six to one. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Business number one, we have our monthly financial report. Ms. Nelson?
Hello. Honorable Counsel attaches the budget update for August 2018. This update represents 17 percent of the current physical year. Overall revenues are currently at 21 percent, slightly higher than last year. Expenditures are at 15 percent, the budget projection, the same as last year. There are no significant wire transfers or ACH transfers to report.
So not specifically for this budget, but how are we making out with the audit for last year? Are we digging deeply into it at this point?
It's going well. We just have a handful of items. They have already left. They left actually a couple days early and we have a few more responses to answer from them.
Anybody else have questions on the financial report? Mr. Fitzmaurice?
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. I'd like to ask regarding the last budget year, what is our estimate for the end-of-year surplus or deficit?
Are you, in regards to 630, 2018?
Yes.
And you're asking roughly what the surplus will be?
Yeah, what was the end-of-year balance?
Well, currently, the auditors haven't finished. There will be a couple adjustments. So, you know, it's looking like what I had said previously, six figures, low to mid-six figures surplus.
So if you want to ballpark a dollar amount, 250 to 300?
I'd say 330.
330?
Okay, thank you very much.
I hate to speculate, but...
I understand. We know how accountants are. Until everything's done, don't speculate.
Yeah, I understand, but we're supposed to also be reporting this. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the monthly financials? Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. New business number one. Request approval to award phone system replacement to Rhode Island Telephone, Incorporated. Cory is back in. He ran out and came back real quick.
Evening, council members. I want to bring your attention to the phone system replacement PowerPoint presentation. The past few months, the town has been working to find a phone system replacement that will replace the existing phone system that has been working for the town for over 15 years now. The review committee is representative of each location of the town. For the police department, we had Lieutenant Michael Morse. For the town hall, Richard Tulipsky. For the DPW, Brian Woodhead. For the fire department, Captain Steve Lynch, and myself as the town agent for the RFP. The proposal opening was 1 PM on August 6, 2018. We had 11 interested parties. Out of the 11, four proposed submitted proposals. Out of the four, three were considered responsive. And the figures that you have in front of you are spread out over two fiscal years, this coming fiscal year and this coming fiscal year. So the intention was to fit the budget put forth from the town administrator's budget, which was $25,000 per each year. Rhode Island Telephone was able to meet that budget at a $50,000 system cost overall, $25,000 for each fiscal year, and with no maintenance cost for the initial three years, with $3,500 cost in year four, as well as no mandatory annual recurring costs. So if the town decided that they felt the need for maintenance support was unnecessary, they could opt out of that cost and go forward as they are now, which is without maintenance cost on the existing phone system. So Rhode Island Telephone was able to meet the expectations put forward by the town for budgetary concerns. And as you can see, the other proposals that we had received, some came in initially lower on the total system cost, but when you take into consideration maintenance for the three years, the overall, the overall cost into the future was significantly higher. So the vendor shortlist demonstrations narrowed down to Rhode Island Telephone and Vertical Communications, which were the two lowest bidders who were also the most qualified. And that was conducted on 9/12/2018. The final recommendation on 9/17 consisted of the scoring matrix seen in front of you. Rhode Island Telephone, we felt, met all conditions perfectly in our bidding, functional and technical, as well as experience and initial costs and ongoing costs. They had, they met all qualifications that the committee put forth. So we are recommending Rhode Island Telephone. Their notable past projects include a number of towns in Rhode Island, and they do also have a relationship with Portsmouth as they are the Portsmouth School Department's vendor for their existing phone system. And the Portsmouth School Department did speak very highly of them and their experience with them in the past. They will be using the same, some of the same technicians that worked on the school department's 2008 installation for this project. They have a very engaged senior management. In fact, the owner is the one who gave us the demonstration for the system. Excellent references. And their approach, they have a very sound approach. The project price is fixed. We should not be expecting anything over $50,000 between the two phases. Phase one and phase two will both be completed at the, between the beginning of their respective fiscal year, July 1st, and the end of their calendar year, so December 31st. And they did emphasize a customer-centric approach to the delivery of the project. So in the end, I feel that this was the best choice for the town, as well as the committee felt that way as well. And we did submit a formal recommendation to the town administrator noting Rhode Island Telephone should be the next vendor of choice for the town of Portsmouth for their phone system.
So can you just reiterate, when is the work gonna be done? We're talking about doing it?
Yes. So between now and the end of the year, we plan to do phase one, which is the Portsmouth Police Department and the Portsmouth Fire Department. So for the situation that currently is existing at the police department, that also affects the fire department. So those two will be the first, the first two locations for the new phone system. And then, following that, would be the town hall and Department of Public Works.
And town hall and Department of Public Works will be done after July 1st or next?
July 1st of next year. We will be starting that project and that will be completed before the end of the calendar year.
Obviously, we're gonna be working within the building of the new station to coordinate with all the new technology at the new station?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Are we gonna stick with utilizing Cox or are we going back to Verizon? This is, I know we've had issues in the past with phones not working because of power outages and things like that.
Right now, in order to make this as least complicated as possible, we are keeping the existing telephony. However, there are opportunities in the future to not only go with what I would recommend as a more reliable service, but also one that could also offer the town a lower-cost option. But these phone systems support that new type of telephony service. We're just not moving in that direction at this time so that, particularly with this first phase of the project, we don't do too much at any given time.
Okay. Any further questions, Court?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
In the past, when we went to Cox the last time, we did away with all of our copper lines in all of our buildings. Are we requesting a copper line in every building such that when they go down?
Yes. Currently, each building has two copper lines at an emergency minimum. So those are currently in the existing phone system. We're using those with the new phone system, so they will be provisioned. And also, the main telephony service, which is a T1 PRI, will be the primary method of incoming and outgoing calls. So there will be at least two redundant modes of telephony for the town should the primary mode fail.
Is the EOC on this? Because I would think that that would even be a separate line and a different requirement.
The EOC is on the fire station phone system.
And that is copper, right?
Yes. So EOC, Police Department and Fire Department all have copper 9... Yes. So EOC, Police Department and Fire Department, all have copper 911 lines, as well as the two redundant analog lines that are the copper lines. So, yes, the emergency services lines, as well as two redundant lines, are all copper, which is the most resilient out of any of the phone telephony types.
We just had a serious problem, I think, on that the last time we didn't keep copper around. I think we had to go back.
Yes. And that's why I would not recommend removing it, no matter what the primary mode of telephony is.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for Court?
I have a question. So this bid package is something you put together specs for, or we pay for to do that?
Yes. I was the one who put out the RFP. My experience, I have four years of experience in the telephony field, so it made me uniquely, it made me a unique candidate to lead this project. So I have experience being a sales engineer and implementing Cisco, Mytel, ShoreTel, Intertel, Avaya, so a number of the telephony, phone systems that were proposed here. So I was able to give insight to the committee that the vendors weren't even able to put forward in their demonstrations and make a more intelligent response, I guess.
Okay. This, are they moving to fiber optics on phone or is it just for cable services? Because I think it's halfway down East Main Road at this point and eventually it'll be here.
So right now, the town does have fiber optic in the building and there, so the direction that the town could go one day is to put their telephony services on that fiber optic. Right now, that's something I wouldn't recommend. We would need to do a little bit more research in that to make that move. However, there is some possible cost savings going that route. The way that this system is proposed, the police station is going to be the newer IP-based phone system and the other locations, which have more traditional wiring, are going to be digital phones to accommodate that more traditional wiring. But the new police station is gonna have updated infrastructure so they can support the IP phones and, you know, that type of system going forward. So if it becomes a concern where public safety, for example, needs extra resiliency in their phone systems, IP phones are able to make failover. Like if a phone system dies, it can immediately failover to a second phone system. That's a potential with voiceover IP and that's one of the potential features that these new phone systems have to offer. So we're moving in a direction that's offering more resilient phone systems for the town. Also, just able to cut costs and offer a feature set that the existing phone system doesn't offer, such as having your phone's extension live on a mobile phone, for example. So police and fire, if they're out and about, fire inspections, for example, and they give their phone number out instead of giving a mobile number, they're able to give their extension's phone number and then if someone calls their extension, they can get that phone call on their cellphone as if they were in the office. So there's a lot of things, a lot of benefits with the phone systems that we've reviewed and we felt that Rhode Island Telephone delivered the most feature-filled phone system at the best value.
It sounds like a good system. The IP phones that you mentioned, that's strictly passing on the number to mobiles for police officers as opposed to DPW and fire? They'll also have that capability?
Luckily, the phone system nowadays, whether you have a digital phone or an IP phone, you can have all the feature sets because all the features take place in the phone system itself. It's not happening at the phone. The benefit of an IP phone is if the phone system went down and it needed to have a backup system that it could failover to, those IP phones would know where that second phone system is. So it would, it offers that level of functionality. It's more of resiliency than anything else. IP phones offer a layer of resiliency that digital phones cannot.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? I have a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rhode Island...
Rhode Island telephone.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto new business number two, press ratification, appointment of Jennifer West as town clerk. Mr. Rayner?
Mr. President, Counsel, we're all aware that there was a resolution that was passed in July 2016 and subsequently approved by the voters, which amended our charter, making the town clerk an appointed vice, an elected position which takes effect November 6th of this year. Therefore, in accordance with the town charter and the applicable articles, I submit to you my request for your ratification of the appointment of Ms. Jennifer West as the town clerk effective on November 6, 2018. Jennifer has been serving as our town clerk for two years, following that general election in November. She is unaffiliated for almost a year now. She is an exemplary public servant and I have no reservation continuing her as an appointed vice-elected town clerk. I've listed some of the highlights here of her service in these last two years. I'd just like to add that I have worked closely with Jennifer on a day-to-day basis for two years. I would consider this the world's longest interview she has passed. She's proven to be a good town clerk, demonstrates strict adherence to her fiduciary responsibilities and has gained the confidence of the staff that works with her and for her. I'm appointing her to this position that she already holds and does very well in. I respectfully ask for your concurrence.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Rayner? Motion to approve the...
To reappoint Jennifer West as town clerk as according to the town administrator's request.
I don't think it's a reappointment.
Second.
Any other question? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. Future meetings, we have coming up October 9th, which will be a Tuesday because of the Columbus Day holiday, our regular scheduled council meeting, October 22nd. And then November 13th, which will be a Tuesday as well because of the Veterans Day holidays, which will be observed on the 12th, even though it's the 11th. Yeah.
Oh.
And I don't believe we have a need for any other, since we have our regular schedule back, we won't be doing any more last-minute, anybody meet on Thursday night meetings, so...
You never know.
You never know. Good point, Mr. Kessin.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes.